Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is August 2nd, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation, pledge allegiance by Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you, please bow your heads. Father, we come to you today with humility and thanks for the many blessings that you bestow upon us, those that we recognize and unfortunately those that we don't. We want to lift up our veterans to you, pray that you'd be with them, be with their families. Thank you for all of those also that are still active. We thank you that they are responsible for those freedoms that we enjoy, that allow the blessings that are bestowed upon us. Lord, especially our Purple Heart recipients, as we dedicated a parking space in our facility today. We pray that that space would be a remembrance every time one would walk by of the price it's paid. We thank you for those that paid the ultimate sacrifice and those that we remember that are still with us. Father, bless all the local, county, state, and national leaders, and be among us tonight and guide us through your spirit to be understanding, objective, and consider all of our citizens that our decisions affect. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosden?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinke?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
All present.
Madam City Clerk, do we have a council member requesting to participate remotely?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Cosden.
Is there a motion to allow Councilmember Cosden to appear remotely?
Motion to allow. Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
No.
Hayden?
Yes.
Long? Pardon me?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the motion?
Oh, a motion to allow Councilmember Cosden to participate remotely.
Yes.
Shepherd? Steinke?
Yes.
Welsh?
Yes.
Cosden?
Yes.
Cummings?
No.
That is five ayes, three nays, motion carried.
Okay, item five is changes to the agenda. The only change that I have listed here is public hearing item 10A, Resolution 17123, has been withdrawn at the request of city management. And city management would like to move that particular item to introductions 10C1 on tonight's agenda. Other than that, I don't have any changes.
Motion to approve with the change.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six is recognition and achievements. And tonight, we do have a couple items on 6A. Presentation to city employees, years of service. And tonight, we have two individuals, I believe. One is here present and another one is not. So what I would like to do, to start with at this time, I'd like to recognize following employee for their outstanding service and dedication to the city of Cape Coral. They've actually served on the police department for the last 23 years. I want to thank them for their contribution to the cities and all the efforts they've put into their daily responsibilities to make our city a better and safe place. Thank you for being such a valuable member, not only to our organization but to community as a whole. Madam City Clerk, once I make my way down to the front of the dais, could you please read the name of the recipient along with their years of service who are currently in the audience? As your name is called, could you please come forward to receive your award and then stand with me and we'll take a few pictures?
Captain Dina Cox, Police Department, 23 years of service.
Again, congratulations, Captain Cox, and we appreciate all your dedication to our community for the last 23 years. At this time, I also would like to recognize another employee for their outstanding service and dedication to the city of Cape Coral and to the Cape Coral Police Department as well. I want to thank them for their contribution to the city, all the efforts that they put into their daily responsibilities to making our city a better place. Thank you for being such a valuable member of not only our organization but our community and again, all of your leadership on the police department as well. Madam City Clerk, could you please read the name of the recipient who was unable to attend tonight's presentation?
Deputy Chief Michael Catania, Police Department, 28 years of service.
And let's give him a round of applause. Okay, it looks like the next item 6B on the agenda is the Community Recognition Award from American Legion Post 90. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening's Community Recognition Award goes to American Legion Post 90, who received the Best Public Relations Award. Today, we recognize Cape Coral's American Legion Post 90 for earning the prestigious American Legion Media Alliance Award for Best Public Relations Program. Post 90 competed against 95 other American Legion posts. To earn the award, American Legion Public Relations Programs around the nation were judged on their external public relations outreach efforts. Winners were selected by the American Legion Media Alliance Task Force and certified by the American Legion Media and Communications Commission. Post 90 leadership attributes this success to their marketing committee, the American Legion Riders, the Sons of American Legion, and the Legion Auxiliary. Today, we're happy to recognize Post 90 for their public relations excellence and for the invaluable support and community to the community that the post provides to Cape Coral veterans. Here to accept the award for Post 90 is Commander Keith Barris, Public Relations Chair Ted Clark, and the marketing committee. The award is a Community Recognition Award. It says the city of Cape Coral is pleased to recognize your accomplishment. Thank you.
And again, congratulations to American Legion Post 90 and their recognition award. Okay, next item is Purple Heart Month recognition. Today, as we approach Purple Heart Day nationally, which we recognize on August 7th, the city of Cape Coral is honoring veterans and their families who have received their Purple Heart Medal, which is presented to servicemen who have been wounded or killed as a result of enemy action while serving in the U.S. military. At this time, please enjoy a brief Purple Heart video. Please play the video.
Because of the sacrifices that the soldiers are making, that a lot of us choose to make, you know, we go into this knowing that there's risks. And we all understand what those risks are. But it's important to acknowledge sometimes the consequences of those risks of the soldiers and the understanding that this is something that could happen to us and that if it does, we're at least receiving the recognition that we've chosen to do that and that something has happened. And that's a way that we kind of, you know, I guess, acknowledge that. The real impact is are the soldiers that receive and have either long-lasting wounds or end up succumbing to those wounds. To me, it's a big, it signifies their sacrifice.
Please join me in a moment of silence to honor all the service members who have made the ultimate sacrifice in defending our nation's freedom. Thank you. As we all know, freedom isn't free. And we must always remember that when we think of our lost soldiers who made that ultimate sacrifice. Purple Heart recipients, who we have the honor to be with you today, could you please stand to be recognized? Also, if there's anyone in the audience who has a lost family member who has earned a Purple Heart, please rise as well. Let's give all of these men and women another round of applause. Again, thank you for your service and thank you for your contribution to our country. And today's a special day for us and we appreciate you being here today. Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item eight, which is citizens' input time, a maximum of 60 minutes is set on the input of citizens' own matters concerning city government. Boy, they got my agenda all messed up here. It's three minutes per individual. If you wish to speak during citizens' input, please come up to the podium to my left, your right. State your name for the record.
Good afternoon. I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. William Ulrich about the J.C. Park renovation. I am here today to speak about the city's plan for J.C. Park. The city of Cape Coral is planning on turning a neighborhood park into a carnival that will give boaters and others a place to go. But for me and for a large number of Cape Coral residents, it will have a terrible impact on our lives. It will affect our security, our privacy. It will negatively impact the quality of life for which we chose Cape Coral. For me personally, I will have food trucks 50 feet from my windows, belching smoke, smells, and running generators all day and into the night. I doubt anyone on this council would choose to live in that environment. Very simply, the city's plan will be an absolute disaster for me and for many others, which is why a number of concerned citizens and neighbors have put together a fairly complete list of topics and issues that should or could cause the city to reverse its plan to destroy the neighborhood park in order to create a destination for boaters. A petition is circulating that has already had thousands of names on it. That is a strong beginning for citizens to stand up and protect the quality of life being threatened by the city. I want to know if the city has completed an environmental impact statement identifying the extensive negative impacts their plan will have on the environment. Some of the damages or problems have been pointed out by others, including damage to the river, the manatee population, and so on. Other damages that may be included are environmental impact statements, including noise pollution, light pollution, air pollution, whatever is used to define odor pollution, parking problems, increased crime, reduction of property values, and a negative impact on privacy for those who own or rent in the area. The historical importance of the park, including ties to Native Americans, is another possible issue that may leave the city open to legal challenges. And again, for me personally, I experienced three miracles that make J.C. Park very special to me. So special that I am willing to fight as hard as I can to prevent the city from destroying a neighborhood park to offer some benefits to non-residents. Thank you for your time, esteemed council members.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, city council members, good afternoon. My name is Ruth Hegg. Probably remember me from a few weeks ago. And you're probably wondering, am I going to see this lady every single meeting now? I'll circle back around to that in just a moment. It seems like we're all fighting for the last little bit of green space we have left here in Cape Coral. Seems to be the common theme. Actually, I hadn't planned on speaking today, but while I was walking my dogs the other morning, I spoke to a few of my neighbors. And during this discussion, it was about the proposed Red Fish Point development. And at one point in the conversation, one of them said to me, "Well, it might be time to move." And that just struck me and I thought, "Or we could address this issue with the leadership of our city." So here I am, following my own advice. I have many thoughts on politics and so forth, but I'll keep my comments to the level I'm addressing here today. I tend to believe that when a person enters politics, they do so, when they do so from a grassroots level, they do so because they want to make a difference and they have the confidence that they will and can make things happen. I am certain that most, if not all of you, hold your positions today because you wanted to make a difference in the city that you love. We elect people that we trust to be a voice for what is important to us. My observations thus far is that most, if not all of you, are fair-minded, justice-oriented individuals trying to make the best decisions that you can for the constituency in which you represent. To be good at what you do, you must be a great listener. So to answer the question as to whether you will be hearing more from me, I would guess probably yes. When I feel something is important to me, my family, my home, or my community, or if I feel I have something of value to offer, you will hear from me because I do believe you are listening. And I will always do so with respect and reverence for what you are doing for our city. Thank you for that. I really appreciate that. We all should, I think your job is thankless, so thank you for that. Today, I would ask the members of this council to help us to save our little precious and protected land by supporting the idea that those 340 acres be sold for a fair market value to a conservation program such as Conservation 2020. And lastly, although not on today's agenda, I would love to hear some discussion from members of this council on the subject. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Benasia. I reside on Pelican Boulevard just north of Rotary Park. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm opposed to the proposed Red Fish Point development on the 350 acres of wetlands south of Rotary Park. My house is one of 3,500 residents within the one mile of Rotary Park. My home was flooded by Hurricane Ian. I understand we had eight feet of storm surge that resulted in floodwaters being two to three feet above grade in some places. I own an older home that had 20 inches of storm surge on the outside of my house. My neighbor was fortunate. His house is 21 inches higher than mine and he was not flooded. But most of the homes on Pelican Boulevard were flooded. My point is that if the wetlands had been developed, that that storm surge would have been greater. My neighbor would have suffered and other neighbors in that area. I do not want to be flooded again. I want to reduce the risk of being flooded and I'm opposed to Red Fish Point development. I had $130,000 worth of damage. And if only one-third of the 3,500 residents in my area were flooded, that's approximately $150 million in damages. That's a lot more than the $40 million that the landowners want to sell that property for. Please do not approve the land use change for Red Fish Point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Please come forward.
My name is Joanne Harrison. I'm a Cape Coral resident, registered voter. I just wanted to make a few comments about J.C. Park. And I realize you want to make it a boater's destination and the residents do not. And I'm curious to where we're getting the millions of dollars to make these unwanted changes. Are they taxpayer dollars? A professional advised me the cost of just AC wall averages $1,500 a foot. If it needs to be 1,500 feet in length, the cost could be near $2 million. That's just the seawall without the outlook, doesn't allow for new road construction, parking, bandstands, seating, splash park, bar, food trucks, and the marina. How much usable, actual usable land would be left for the park if you put in a marina? Maybe four and a half acres for everything else? There already is a new boat destination under construction on the river just a stone's throw from J.C. Park. Wouldn't it be appropriate to see if that one is successful before destroying our park? What would differentiate your plans from that? Have you gotten the approval from the Army Corps of Engineers, with concurrence from the South Florida Water Management, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and Natural Marine Fisheries? There's absolutely no justifiable reason to even consider disturbing J.C. Park until then. Australian pines, they belong to the park and are 40 years old. Drive the Cape Coral and Fort Myers areas and you'll find less than a handful of these pines. And all are as old and mature as the park's trees. Not one young Australian pine anywhere. The pines in the park hold the soil in place, break the force of the storms, add so much beauty and shade, and they save our assets in so many ways. Shade, a rare commodity in Florida. It's very much appreciated in our park. People literally come from all around to enjoy it with the breeze created by the pines. With your changes, they'll all be gone and cannot be replaced with the small trees you propose. You should be planting more shade trees and shrubs now and replace those lost in the hurricane. At least turn on the sprinklers. The irrigation system is already there. Turn it on. And the irony of a proposed bar being located adjacent to the pavilion used regularly by post-traumatic stress victims, church groups, and Alcoholics Anonymous has not been lost on the local residents. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Eileen Benasia. I've lived in Cape Coral for over seven years and until a few weeks ago, I had not visited J.C. Park. Why? Because it's a neighborhood park. When I want to visit a park, I'll go to the closest park to my house, which is Rotary Park. And that's what many people do. They go to the local neighborhood park. There's neighborhood parks all over the city and that's the way it should be. A nice, close park to just visit. J.C. Park is perfect for the community that lives around it. When I went there, I noticed that many of the surrounding buildings were condos or apartments. Many of the residents did not have front or backyards to sit in, enjoy the fresh air, birds' songs, or other sounds of human existence. My husband and I made the choice to buy a house that has a yard we can sit in and we do every day of the year. For various reasons, it's not an option for some. For others, it's a choice not to have a house. Regardless, it's obvious that many of the local residents enjoy the park. They take morning walks, meet friends, bring children to play, have a picnic, and walk the dog at night. I've never done anything of those at that neighborhood park because it's not my neighborhood park. It's the park for the people who live around there and it should stay that way.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? There anything, I don't see any. The only thing I wanted to mention tonight, of course, we've noticed the last several weeks, individuals coming forward regarding the Red Fish Point development. As we all know, there is a process that any developer or landowner can go through a process and request a change in either zoning or a future land use of a particular parcel here in Cape Coral. And that process is afforded to everyone. And as we all know, this process is going, is, you know, in the process of being applied for by the developer and at some point, this will come back to city council. I can honestly tell you that myself and probably a majority of the other council that sits up here with me have not received any of that information because there's a process and it's going to have to go through the process. It's going to have to go to the state. It's going to have to go through our planning and zoning commission before it even gets to our desk. So I just want to make sure not only the individuals here tonight, but the community that's watching knows that that process is afforded to everyone. At some point, that will be coming before this council for determination as long as that particular property owner or developer goes through the entire process. So I just want to make sure that was perfectly clear. Some people may not know how that process works. But thank you for coming again today. Councilmember Steinke?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say something very similar just to make sure for those that are here this evening, those that are watching through Closed Circuit TV, that this is privately owned property at Red Fish Point and every single person that owns their own property can use whatever systems that the municipality allows for them to address their property. So just like a homeowner might want to put a fence in, no matter what a neighbor might say or come to council and say, "You can't let them put a fence in," if there's a process that they can go through, it's every one of those property owners' rights to avail themselves of that process. And so that's the process that's going on right now with this property owner. And so the Conservation 2020 idea, if that private property owner chose to sell the property to private property owner chose to sell the property to the state, basically, for a price that was amenable, then that certainly can happen. And the decision comes between that private property owner and whoever the purchaser of the property would be. And so, until a decision has to be made that would come from a council level, we understand and we've heard, but there's nothing that's come before us that puts us in a position of having to prepare to make a decision. But trust that when that information is put before us, then we will certainly address all of the information involved with it in making as prudent a decision as we can, certainly considering the number of people that have come forward to share their comments, you know, about that. And so, it was commented to me earlier this week that, hey, when there's nothing to say, you should still let people know that there's nothing to say at this point. And so, that was kind of a commitment I made to myself to at least, you know, come forward and say, "It's not that your comments, as it relates to Redfish Point, are falling on deaf ears. It's just that we have, we have nothing that we can or need to say about it at this point, but certainly will when the time comes." Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to item 9A, is the consent agenda. I'll open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion, or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Motion carried.
Okay. We'll move on to item 9B, is appointments to boards and committees. B1 is the charter school governing board. There's one vacancy, and I believe we have two applicants. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. We have received two applications for consideration. The first is from Renee Marazon, and the second from Lynn Nofe. We have, I didn't have anyone check in today, but I did hear that one applicant wasn't able to attend due to a conflict, personal conflict.
Okay. And I will just let council know that I did receive notification from Renee Marazon. Is that how you pronounce her last name, Madam City Clerk?
I believe so, yes.
She, she had a family emergency, death in the family, so she wasn't able to attend. So, I just wanted the rest of council to have the same information that I have on that particular applicant. So, Madam City Clerk, the remaining applicant, do you want to see if they're in the room?
Is Lynn Nofe in the room?
Yes.
Hi.
Okay, ma'am. If you'd like to come forward, typically, we give one minute. Does that work with council like we have in the past? One minute. Just please come up to the podium to your right there. Introduce yourself, and you have one minute to bring anything to our attention that you would like.
Okay. Hello, I'm Lynn Nofe, and I'm just desiring to be a part of the governing board for the Cape Coral Charter Schools, because I have a desire to see students succeed in education, life skills, character development. And I am a retired elementary teacher, and I have had 20 years. I actually have a master's degree and a bachelor of science. I hold both. And I have, since I've moved down here to Cape Coral from New York three years ago, I am now back in the schools, helping children with literacy and math. I'm doing, I'm tutoring after-school in the schools. So, I do have a love for children. I believe every student deserves just success in their education and to be loved. So, I would love to be a part of the board, and it's an honor to meet all of you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. And so, with that, Madam City Clerk, we'll do like we normally do, go down our voting order, and each council member will pick a candidate that they'd like to support.
Gunter?
Marazon?
Hayden?
Marazon.
Long?
Marazon.
Shepherd?
Lynn Nofe.
Steinke?
Nofe.
Welsh?
Marazon.
Cosden?
Nofe.
Cummings?
Nofe.
All right. So, that is four for Marazon and four for Nofe.
Okay. I guess we got to go through the process again. So, Madam City Clerk, let's go through it again.
Gunter?
Marazon?
Hayden?
Marazon.
Long?
Marazon.
Shepherd?
Nofe.
Steinke?
Marazon.
Welsh?
Marazon.
Cosden?
Marazon.
Welsh? Pardon me. Cummings?
Nofe.
Okay. So, that is six for Marazon and two for Nofe.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve, Marazon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd? Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Motion carried.
Okay. Item two is youth council. We have one vacancy. We did have two applicants. I will tell you that Connie in our office received an email this afternoon where Danielle Basura withdrew her application. So, that only leaves Kelly Leb...
I believe it's Lebbit.
Lebbit. That only leaves the one candidate to pick from. So, do we have a motion for that?
Motion to approve, Lebbit.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Motion carried.
Okay. Item three is Budget Review Committee Discussion. I'll turn that over to Mr. City Manager to begin with. I know that Clerk had added this particular item. I actually wanted to add it too, but I'll give Madam City Clerk the opportunity and the City Manager to weigh in first.
Thank you. As you know, the Budget Review Committee currently has one alternate position filled. We have seven vacancies. I was, under your rules, I'm supposed to try to fill the vacancies within 30 days. I'm happy to put out the notice for that, but I did know that you had some discussions recently about doing appointments in December. So, I just wasn't sure if I'm on the right track with the next steps.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to add before we get started?
No, the very similar discussion. So, the Clerk's office typically, when a vacancy pops up, will advertise and bring before you, as was, did tonight, vacancies for filling in light of the recent discussions with your obtaining a second, Mr. Mayor, to kind of rewrite the number of members on a board, when they meet, when they're going to be appointed, in addition to Councilmember Steinke's task that he was going to be relooking at, you know, the duties and responsibilities of the BRC itself. It's, I think it's important for us to take a pause on just doing the standard process, running out there and seeking applicants, because, one, we don't know what they're going to be doing. Neither do they. And, two, we don't know when they would even be starting, based on whatever council may do with the rewrite of the boards and its committees. So, we think it's appropriate to pause, just kind of listen to what you all would like us to do. We can absolutely advertise, but we just don't feel it's right to do that at this moment, and we'd like your permission to hold off on doing that, because it is against the rules.
Okay. I really believe probably the best solution. We all know, even if we advertise right now, we'd be a 30-day process. Then, we have to schedule it on the agenda. We'll be done the budget cycle within that timeframe. So, my recommendation would be, I was going to work on the changes, and I had committed to bringing that back to a committee of the whole meeting. So, I think, and I think I can do that, working with the City Attorney's Office between now and our next committee of the whole meeting. I think it would be a golden opportunity then, not only to bring back what I said I was going to work on. That gives Councilmember Steinke the opportunity as well. Any recommendations or anything that you were working on, and collectively as a council, we can have that discussion at the next committee of the whole meeting. So, that would be, I think, the best solution at this time. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. And I'll open it up for any other discussion. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I agree. There's no reason to advertise and try and select a committee, because the budget process will be over by the time we start to make those selections. Come back with whatever recommendations you have, Councilmember Steinke, whatever recommendations you have, and we'll take it from there.
Is that agreeable to everybody, to all of council? Move forward in that process? No. No, just a general consensus. Mr. City Manager, it looks like, and Madam City Clerk, if you could add that as an agenda item on our next committee of the whole meeting. Do you know when that is?
23rd.
It's 23rd.
August 23rd? Okay. And we'll have that discussion then. Madam City, or, Mr. Deputy City Manager.
It's been a long habit for having a woman sitting here.
And I'm sure she's still here.
Yes, probably, probably. I just wanted to clarify. Are you going to be coming to our office to do, like, dueling resolutions, or are you just going to be coming back at a cow with your both recommended changes, and then having a discussion, and then we draft the resolution? I wanted to know the process.
Right. And I'm okay with that, if we all want to have the discussion first, because I'd hate that, be wasting your time. And he brings something forward, I bring something forward, and we may even go a third direction. So, I think it would probably be better off, let's just wait till the 23rd.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
We'll vet it, figure out what direction. Councilmember Steinke, run your recommendations, or possibly a term sheet. I'll do the same. We can disseminate that information to council, and then we'll have a discussion, and collectively, we'll figure the direction that we're going to be going in.
I'm not foreclosing you coming to our office individually to discuss. I just didn't know whether we would have to be drafting two different resolutions. So, that was clarified. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmembers. Thank you.
Yeah, my intention was to take our existing resolution, redline it. It doesn't need to be totally recreated. Just some modifications, a little trim here and there. And if there seemed to be any legal requirement, then I'd certainly come to you to make sure that it was legal before I would bring it before the body for consideration, but not any drafting or anything like that.
Good. All right. It sounds like we have a plan, and we'll address that on the 23rd. Okay. Next item is 9C, unfinished business. C1 is follow-up for items for council. I don't see anything listed. Does council have any follow-up items? Seeing none, we'll move on to D, new business. Councilmember Steinke, did I just forget to turn your light off, or did you have?
No, I just popped it on. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure, and if City Clerk could just make sure that we handled item seven, approval of the minutes.
So, on today's agenda, I do not have a set of minutes presented.
Okay.
Often, we see another set, but there's usually two weeks between meetings.
Okay.
So, the 7:26 minutes will be on the August 16th meeting.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Okay. Follow-up items for council. Any council members have any follow-up items? Okay. New business, we don't have anything listed. Personnel actions, none listed. Petitions to council, none listed. Follow-up items from City Manager, we have none listed. Mr. City Manager, you have anything? Okay. We'll move on to item 10, ordinances and resolutions. 10A is quasi-judicial public hearings. Resolution 171-23 has been withdrawn from tonight's agenda, moved to the introductions. 10C1 later in tonight's agenda. So, we will move on to ordinance 57-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 57-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 5 through 20, block 2175, Cape Coral subdivision, unit 32, from commercial to industrial zone. Property is located at 809 through 907 Kismet Parkway East, providing severability and an effective date.
I'll turn it over. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chad.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. City Council, for the record, Chad Boykow, principal planner with the City's Planning Division. This is ordinance 57-23. This is a privately-initiated rezoning application. The applicant for this is Gulf Coast Closets LLC. It's a little bit north of Kismet Parkway and east of Andalucia Boulevard. It's a little over two acres in size. It does have utilities that is available to the site with water, sewer, and irrigation. And then, the applicant's request is a rezone from the commercial zoning district to the industrial zoning district. This land was recently amended to the mixed-use land use district a couple of months ago, and they are following up with a rezone to this. It is eight undeveloped parcels within northeast Cape Coral. These have frontage on Kismet Parkway, and it is a budding to the south of the Andalucia Industrial Park up in the northeast Cape Coral. The applicant is asking for this rezone and the previous land use change in order to build a cabinet manufacturing company on this. They have the contract, as a contract to purchase, pending the approval of the rezoning to industrial. The idea is that the commercial zoning district did not allow for manufacturing businesses, so they had to request for the industrial. And as we mentioned earlier, it is adjacent to Andalucia Industrial Park. The entire area to the north of these properties is zoned industrial. To the south, across Kismet Parkway, you have commercial zoning, as well as to the east and to the west, you have commercial zoning as well. This is pretty much near the intersection of Andalucia and Kismet, and you have existing commercial that is existing in all four directions from that intersection. We looked at this per the Land Development Code. We have some standards that go into whether or not an area is appropriate or not for a rezone. Staff's response to some of these standards is that the industrial zoning district is compatible with the mixed-use feature land use district. The applicant's proposed uses of the manufacturing business and the other uses that are in the industrial district would be compatible. You do have existing industrial land uses that are to the north within that industrial park. You have commercial all around. You have very little existing sort of residentially-zoned or land use area that's in the proximity. You do have some homes that are south across Kismet Parkway. However, those homes with their frontage being on Kismet and being near a commercial node, those do have commercial entitlements on them. With the industrial zoning district, the compatibility would be increased for this zoning district, because you would have pretty extensive landscaping and buffering that would be required per our Land Development Code. The city has a well-documented need for commercial lands, and especially for industrial land as well. This will add a couple of acres of industrial land to that city's land use space. It's really challenging to get new industrial lands within the City of Cape Coral, and this would add some of that industrial property in what staff feels is an appropriate location for that, those uses. There's really, you know, the mixed-use district allows for pretty much any zoning district that's out there, and staff finds that this meets several policies within our economic development policy, within our comprehensive plan, and it is compatible with that mixed-use land use designation. And staff recommends approval of the rezone request, and the hearing examiner also recommended approval of this as well. And there were not, there has not been any correspondence for this case. I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 57-23? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is James Maury. I represent Gulf Coast Closets, the applicant, and just here to answer any questions. And I also wanted just to, you know, for the record, the city planning staff have been terrific. They've been professional, helpful throughout the entire process, and they've represented the city well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 57-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to item ten B, legislative public hearings. We have ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-three, an ordinance providing for the annexation of a parcel of land lying in section four, township forty-four south, range twenty-four east, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, providing for redefinition of city boundaries, providing for City of Cape Coral Fire Department and Utility Services, providing for severability and an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Due to the nature of this matter, anyone wishing to speak and provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Chad.
Okay. Once again, Mayor, City Council, Chad Boyko, principal planner with the City's Planning Division. This is ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-three. This is a privately initiated annexation request. The applicant is Didi Pine Island LLC. This is in the northeast Cape Coral, along Pine Island Road, near the US forty-one and Del Prado Boulevard intersection. It's a little under nine acres in size. It would have the urban services transition designation, which means that utilities would be available to the site upon annexation. And the applicant is looking to annex these two parcels into the City of Cape Coral boundaries. We analyzed this and found that their surrounding development, non-residential to the west and to the north. You do have some single-family homes that are within uncorporate Lee County to the south and to the east. It is adjacent to the city on the north side, which is across Pine Island Road, so it meets that statutory requirement of being adjacent to the City of Cape Coral land in one direction. It would be serviced by the Cape Coral for water and sewer. This would not create an enclave, which is another statutory requirement. And then for the next two steps for this to develop within the City of Cape Coral, the applicant would need a future land use map amendment and a rezoning application will need to be filed. We recommend approval of this annexation. We haven't received any correspondence, and I'm here for any further questions.
I will now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-three, please come forward.
Veronica Martin with TDM Consulting, representing the applicant, Didi Pine Island LLC. Again, as Mr. Boyko has stated, this is a voluntary annexation from Lee County into the City of Cape Coral. The applicant did meet with both Lee County and the City of Cape Coral Development Services to ascertain whether potable water and sanitary sewer would be available to this site. That was the critical path moving forward for development of this property. The ultimate end use of this property is going to be commercial medical office. I do have a couple of slides to share with you. Basically, this is the area location of the property. The site address is twenty-seven hundred and twenty-seven fifty northeast Pine Island Road. The site is eight point eight seven acres in size. The next slide actually shows you the jurisdictional map. The area that's overlaid in the light yellow are the cities that are currently under the City of Cape Coral's jurisdiction. And as you can see, there's still a small enclave of property that is in the Lee County's jurisdiction, and we're slowly reducing that enclave. So this entire area along Pine Island Road will be ultimately in the City of Cape Coral's jurisdiction, which will, of course, increase the tax base. If this annexation is approved, the applicant will be required to apply for a future land use map amendment to the Pine Island Road District, and also a rezoning application probably to a commercial corridor. That pretty much concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance sixty dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance sixty dash twenty-three, an ordinance providing for the partial release of permanent easement within a portion of tract A, block twenty-two-seven, Cape Coral, unit thirty-one, as more particularly described herein, authorizing the mayor to execute a release of said easement, property located at fifteen eleven northeast Pine Island Road, providing severability and an effective date.
Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members, Dawn Andrews with the Public Works Property Management Division. Ordinance sixty dash twenty-three is requesting the partial release of a permanent easement within a portion of fourteen nineteen northeast Pine Island Road, which is also a portion of tract A, block two zero two seven, Cape Coral, unit thirty-one. This is the Dairy Queen site located on Pine Island Road. In two thousand and five, the city was granted an ingress egress easement and an easement for drainage and utility facilities. A portion of the easement area is no longer needed as it extends into the adjoining parcel to the east, which was replatted. So the Dairy Queen site and the portion to the east, which was also a portion of tract A, block two zero two seven, are now in Cape Coral Commons subdivision. So the current owner of lot one, block A, Cape Coral Commons, Pine Island, which is Pine Island, Cape Coral, Florida LLC, has requested the release of a portion of this easement as they are wanting to develop on the site. The easement is in its current location conflicts with their construction plans. The city has reviewed the easement area, and it is not needed by the City of Cape Coral, and therefore is willing to terminate and release the easement. I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. I now open up public input. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance sixty dash twenty-three? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input's now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance sixty dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to ordinance fifty-six dash twenty-three. Hold on. I think I skipped a page, I'm sorry. Item ten C is introductions. We'll move on to resolution one seventy-one dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution one seventy-one dash twenty-three, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Eldorado Parkway West right-of-way and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots forty-eight through fifty-one, block one ninety, Cape Coral, unit three, providing for the vacation of plat for platted easements lying in lots forty-nine through fifty, block one ninety, Cape Coral, unit three, property located at one thirteen and one seventeen Eldorado Parkway West, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there any council or staff discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolution one ninety-four dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution one ninety-four dash twenty-three, a resolution pursuant to the City of Cape Coral Land Development Code, Article Three, Development Review, Chapter One, Development Review Procedures, Section three point one point eleven, Public Hearing Procedures, and Section three point one point fourteen, Review by Department Directors, Administrative Appeals and Appeals, and the City of Cape Coral Comprehensive Plan, Affirming or Reversing the Decision of the Hearing Examiner rendered on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three in VAR HECS Order one dash twenty-two-three, that denied a variance of six point seven feet from the minimum front setback requirement of twenty-five feet to allow a single-family home to be constructed eighteen point three feet from the front property line in a residential single-family zone on property described as lots thirty-nine and forty, block one twenty-nine, Cape Coral, unit five. Property is located at three oh two southwest twenty-ninth street, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance fifty-six dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-six dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Six, Pensions, Division Three, General Employees Pension, to update names of salary schedules and to include a buy-up and COLA increase provision for members employed prior to September thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Any discussion by council or staff? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending City of Cape Coral, ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-three, which amended ordinance four dash twenty-three, which amended ordinance eighty-one dash twenty-two, which adopted the City of Cape Coral operating budget, revenues, and expenditures, and capital budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, by increasing the total revenues and expenditures by a total of forty-one million, four hundred, one thousand, eight hundred dollars, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance sixty-four dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance sixty-four dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, establishing the CC Community Development District located within the municipal boundaries of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, containing approximately one hundred thirty point two seven acres, pursuant to Chapter one ninety Florida statutes, providing for the establishment of the boundaries for the CC Community Development District, providing for the designation of the initial board members, providing for the district name, providing for statutory provisions governing the district, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance sixty-five dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance sixty-five dash twenty-three, an ordinance of City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, establishing the Victory Park Community Development District located within the municipal boundaries of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, containing approximately one hundred thirty-seven point three nine acres, pursuant to Chapter one ninety Florida statutes, providing for the establishment of the boundaries for the Victory Park Community Development District, providing for the designation of the initial board members, providing for the district name, providing for statutory provisions governing the district, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance sixty-eight dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance sixty-eight dash twenty-three, an ordinance approving the license agreement between the City of Cape Coral, a Florida municipal corporation, and Sun Broadcasting, Inc., a Florida corporation, for the temporary use by Sun Broadcasting, Inc., of a portion of city-managed property known as Bernice Brayden Park, to plant American flags to honor the lives lost in the September eleventh, two thousand and one attacks, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eleven, reports. Councilmember Welsh, report.
No report, I just have one question for council. I previously asked either to be excused on Wednesday, the twenty-third, or appear remotely. Seeing that we were kind of split on the vote today, does anyone have an objection to me appearing remotely for that Cal meeting on the twenty-third?
The only thing, I will just let Councilmember Welsh, I'll let you know that I did put this on as the city clerk, to add this to our next committee of the whole, which will be on the twenty-third, so we can have a discussion on remote participation. I know that we have the rules that we have now.
Okay.
But I did put it on there as a discussion, only because prior to the COVID, we didn't have that-
Correct.
-luxury. I think COVID is well past us now, so I think it's prudent for us as a council to have a discussion to see how we want to move and what direction we want to go in. So I did add it for the twenty-third, but until we have that changed.
Yeah, if for some reason, it's like I'm saying, I'm not going to wake up and try to log in and waste anyone's time if, you know, I can't make that meeting. So it's either I'm not going to be here, or I'm going to try to participate remotely. So I'm just asking that now, does anyone have an objection to me participating remotely at that meeting?
Is that next Wednesday, you're telling me?
That's Wednesday, the twenty-third of August.
And I think that's going to be our committee of the whole meeting.
That's the next committee of the whole meeting, yeah.
So, if, for whatever reason, you can't be here, since we're going to have that topic of discussion, I would highly recommend at least-
Okay. Yeah, I can. I can participate remotely, but I'm not, I can't guarantee that I can make it, so I'll continue to do that. Other than that-
Councilmember Cosden, report.
No report.
Councilmember Cummings.
No report.
Councilmember Hayden.
No report.
Councilmember Long.
No report.
Councilmember Shepherd.
No report.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Sorry about that. On the twenty-seventh, I was pleased to attend and speak before the Cape Coral Social Club, and I just wanted to thank Melissa Mickey and Sharon Woodbury for accompanying me there and being there for staff support. Some of the details that I wouldn't have had committed to memory that they did, and the Cape Coral Social Club was highly appreciative of the information that we brought to them there. And then, on the first, I attended our CRA meeting as the alternate liaison, and was really happy that Sharon Woodbury was able to share with the CRA board that we have arranged for additional support for those businesses whose buildings are either deteriorated or affected by storm, that if required to demo and rebuild, that the CRA is going to assist in a greater degree than they were before in the effort to beautify the commercial buildings in our CRA. So Sharon, thank you for sharing that with them, and I know that they were glad to hear that those dollars were there for the commercial businesses that are in our CRA. And that's it.
All right. I was going to follow suit, but since Councilmember Steinkie broke the momentum, I attended the BRC Budget Workshop on the twenty-seventh for Councilmember Steinkie. On the twenty-eighth, I attended the Hurricane Recovery Task Force meeting in Fort Myers. I will tell you, the task force meeting, we're now just starting to get some substance as far as information that's being forwarded to the task force that was developed by the branches. So they're starting to make recommendations. So our last meeting, we really started having those discussions. So once we get more engaged in the discussions, I'll be making sure that I keep everyone informed. Also, attended Hurricane Recovery Task Force meeting with Lee County officials, myself, the Mr. City Manager, Chief Lamb. We had a productive dialogue with county officials, the county manager, Commissioner Ruane, and I think someone from their city attorney's office. But we had some discussions on the CDBG DR funding mechanism, how that's going to apply. So I think it was a productive meeting, and we'll continue to have those discussions as this process moves forward. Also, attended the CRA meeting yesterday and the Patriots Republican Club meeting last night. I also attended the pet of the month filming this morning. So far, I have a hundred percent completion as far as our pets being adopted. Just want to remind the community, Cape Coral Animal Shelter, if you're interested in adopting a pet, I know I only do one pet a month, but there are many, many- a pet, I know I only do one pet a month, but there are many, many pets there, so I would encourage you to go, and if you're interested in adopting a pet, to go to that particular business. Also, this morning, participated in the Purple Heart Parking Space dedication. As we all know, the city of Cape Coral is a Purple Heart city. We were the first ones in southwest Florida back in 2015, so it was nice to, you know, to have that designated parking spot. Mr. City Manager, I don't know if that was your brainstorm or not, but if it was, I think it was a great, great initiative, and thank you for that. Also, today, I had the opportunity with the city manager and Chief Lamb to meet with Congressman Donalds, reference to Hurricane recovery, more so on the federal level, in the federal aspect, recognizing that we not only going through this process, we will have to deal with our local elected officials, the county commission, we're going to have to deal with our state officials as far as our representatives and our senators. We met with them about a week, week and a half ago, so this was on the federal side. So we want to make sure that, we want to make sure that they were completely informed of our $4.1 billion in unmet needs that we have identified, and make sure that they know that we'll be coming forward to ask for some funding for some of those needs. So it was a great, great opportunity to meet Congressman Donalds, and I appreciate him stopping by today. With that, Mr. Deputy City Attorney, report.
No report.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a couple of announcements. Tomorrow morning, 7:30 to 8 to 10 a.m. at Nickers Pub at Coral Oaks Golf Course, we're going to be hosting our first-ever Development Discussions event. This is an initiative to get residents and developers to connect, to learn how to develop projects within the city of Cape Coral. So it's our first inaugural kickoff tomorrow morning, 7:30 to 10 a.m. at Nickers Pub. We also are going to be hosting a bulk solid waste collection as well as household chemical waste Saturday, August 5th, the Saturday, from 7 to 11 here in the City Hall parking lot. And I would like to take an opportunity to just update the council and the community. Because of how successful our bulk pilot center has been received by the community, we're seeing very little participation at this bulk event, and half of what's coming in is bulk and half is the chemical waste. So we're in discussions with the county right now about limiting this to a semi-annual just for the hazardous solid waste, because we are servicing the bulky waste daily with our convenience center. So we may see a shift in this, but it's not because it's not needed, it's because our residents have another outlet that you've all helped us provide last year and fund it again this year. Next week on August 8th, and in the following week on August 15th, we're going to be hosting our budget workshops. They are going to be in the council chambers beginning at 2 p.m., and those are Tuesday, August 8th and August 15th. And then lastly, we are seeking residents for the Cape Coral Yacht Club Stakeholders Group. We have a place on the website for interested parties to go on and register. We are going to be running a lottery for the picking of the committee members or the stakeholder, sorry, not committee, stakeholder members. I think within two hours yesterday of us opening this up, we had over, I think, 400 applications to be a part of this committee. The idea is we're going to select people that have been here for various points of time throughout the community. The idea is we're going to basically put them on a list based on those groupings and have an electronic system basically randomly generate a number assigned to individuals in each cadre, and those individuals will be asked if they want to participate. We do not, we are not intending for those seats on the stakeholders' group to be transferable, so we're not, if somebody's picked and they don't want it, we're not allowing transferability. And if they don't show up on the date that we set, we have not yet considered whether or not we would go to another spot, because we really want to try to get the people who can make it and be on the committee there. We intend on doing it. So that's the plan at this point. I don't know how many we have as of today, but I know within two hours yesterday, we had over 400 people registered. And then lastly, I don't know how many people follow county politics or administration, but yesterday, the county swore in a new county manager, Mr. Dave Harner, and so I just want to congratulate him publicly for him taking the helm at Lee County, and I'm looking forward to a positive relationship with him at the helm and working forward for the residents of Cape Coral as well as Lee County. So congratulations, Dave. Thank you.
Yeah, and one thing I forgot to mention, that I wanted to publicly congratulate Deputy Chief Ben Landshut, and if I pronounced your name wrong, I apologize, but he was recently just promoted to deputy chief. He's been with the police department for 25 years, and I just wanted to thank you for your dedication. We look forward to your leadership, sir. Okay, with that being said, time and place of future meetings. We have a city council budget workshop is scheduled for Tuesday, August 8th, at 2 p.m. here in council chambers. Also, we have a city council budget workshop is scheduled for Tuesday, August 15th, at 2 p.m. here in council chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, meeting adjourned.